Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, May 19th, 2025, 6:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Stock Meeting. This, tonight's meeting will be on Zoom. It will be recorded and it will be available on the town's YouTube page. Tonight, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We'll be going into executive session for the following reason. Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Association, because the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so declares, and I do. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. All right, we are now in executive session. All right, we are now back in open session from executive session. I'm gonna move on to agenda item two. This is discussion of vote whether approve open session minutes from 4:14, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to approve those open session minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. Agenda item two, presentation of the hazard mitigation plan from town planner. Nancy, hello?
Hi, how are you?
Excellent.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm well, thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I wouldn't know, is Craig Pereira on Zoom as well? Okay, great. As you know, the town has recently committed and completed their, has a mitigation plan. It was, went through the process of a very rigorous community outreach program and the building of it. And Craig Pereira, who is from Horsley and Witten, was a big portion of this planning process as well as, as Deb and Victoria, your previous land use planner. And also, I like to give a shout out to Harry Ashley, Paul Ashley, Car Bizarro, Chuck McHumber, and Scott Rose for assisting with this process, because you know, it takes a team to put these plans together. So I don't know if Craig can speak to it or if he wishes for me to continue.
Hi, thanks Nancy. Hi, everybody. So yeah, this is really just a formality. The town has received a letter from FEMA that the hazard mitigation plan draft that was submitted back at the end of 2024 has been approved pending adoption. So now the only remaining step is that the town, that the select board formally adopt the hazard mitigation plan as presented back in August to this same group of folks. And just sign the resolution. Nancy will provide me with a copy of the resolution. I will insert that back into the draft plan. I will submit that plan with the signed resolution to MEMA. MEMA will then forward that plan to FEMA for their records. And then the town will receive a letter from FEMA stating that the hazard mitigation plan is now compliant and in place and good for the next five years.
Awesome, thank you Craig.
Sure. Thank you.
Any questions or concerns on this?
Nope.
Now, we already did the presentation back in August, right? So I don't think we need to go through that again. Is that fair?
No, and like I said, a lot of the department has were involved, as Nancy stated. So a lot of the information came from people that are working in it. So I'm excited to get it done.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this.
Yeah, it opens you up to opportunities that you otherwise wouldn't be available to if a disaster should occur and they declare, a presidential declaration, then Massachusetts would get funds and you would be available to do mitigation projects. Things that you recognize during the event that would need to be corrected. And it also opens up the door for hazard mitigation projects as well. Things that you know are already problematic that you want to fix in advance.
Yep, I'm sure we have quite a few opportunities, we'll call them there, so.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt the hazard mitigation plan as stated in the packet.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, so moving on to agenda item phallus four, right?
Yep.
So to agenda item five. Discussion of vote whether approve and sign the letter of support for the limited, what is it? The Lula, which is
Yeah.
Limited acts, limited. I wanted to remember this and I forgot it. Limited use, limited application elevator. Lift at the Council of Aging grant application for municipal ADA improvement program proposal. So this is obviously is something we need to get, right? And so, well, can we speak a little bit more about this and kind of where we?
Yeah, I'll be happy to touch on this. The town has completed their self-evaluation plan in 2023. This builds on the work that you have already been doing to address any accessibility in your municipal buildings. The COA, as you know, runs a host of various programs, they're very active, as well as many meetings take place there, so it's multifaceted facility. And it will allow the opportunity for people to access not only the first floor, but for those who would need it to access the second floor. I know Rebecca, the COA director, has provided countless programs and she can provide unfortunately too many stories of how someone may not have been able to just immediately just been able to go up to the second floor, but has to go through that extra effort to get back into their car to drive around. This will help avoid that, so. This will, yeah, I'm very excited. I think this is a good addition.
Any elevators in any of our?
No, where, no?
First one. Well, it's not an elevator.
Oh yeah, it's a, sorry.
So yeah, this will be the first one, so it'll be, it'll be good to have.
And I recently had a meeting with the board at the COA and they're, they are seeing more and more of the need for this. So they are 100% on board. And the town has funded the engineering plan and that's been paid for already out of funds. So we are committed to trying to get this Lula lift over to the COA to, for their community and anybody that might need that extra accessibility.
All right, awesome. Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the letter of support for the Lula lift at Council on Aging Grant Application for Municipal ADA Improvement Program Proposal.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes.
The first one to use it. That's the, um.
All right, moving on to agenda item six. Discussion of vote whether approve the license between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Regional Food Pantry to utilize the former police station effective 6/8/2025 through 6/30/2027? Wow, so that means that, has that already been operating for three years now?
We did two years.
Two years, okay, so yeah, sorry, two years, I meant.
We did two and two, so.
Not great at math.
It might have been four years.
Four years, two, yeah.
Twice.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, it feels, wow. Okay, so, I mean, I looked at the contract, nothing jumped out at me.
It's the same. It's the same.
Right? Any questions or concerns on that?
Absolutely.
I know we did run into a little issue with the heat, but at one point of just paying for it and kind of.
Well, we bill them, they pay us, I think that, I mean, yeah, utilities are difficult for them because they're not really raising funds.
Yeah, they're literally a nonprofit in its truest form, where they're actually putting all the money they get back into what they do, which is feed people.
They use it a lot for the gas, for the trucks to to run their vehicles to get the food.
Yeah, they're driving a lot to different places now, so.
Yeah.
Stuff. Be surprised at how many like Amazon facilities in different places they're going to pick up.
Oh yeah.
So it's not just stop and shop bringing them stuff, which we appreciate because obviously they're the biggest supporter.
And it's, yeah, it's great that Stop Shop is actually gonna be stuck, circling around now. You know, we had a little scare there for a moment, but then I know they're a huge contributor to our food pantry, so that's, that's, that's great for the folks in town. Okay, so we could vote on this?
Yep.
All right, so without, entertain a motion to approve the license between the town of Free Town and the Free Town Regional Food Pantry to utilize the former police station effective 6/8/2025 through 6/30/2027?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Agenda item seven, discussion of vote whether approve yoga at Hathaway Park every Wednesday from August 13th to September 24th, from 6:30 to, uh, 6:30 to 5:30 to 6:30 PM. Rain dates on the Thursday of the same week.
Yeah, so it's just gonna be the same group as the last time, Open Doors Yoga Studio. I already had people ask me on Zoom, like, what's yoga happening again? Is it gonna happen this year? So yes, it will, I already talked to them and they're totally on board. I'm really excited. Last year, we had a really good group of people. This year, we have a great group of people at Zumba. Actually, I was just telling Nancy, Rebecca and I went last week and were dancing. So it was a lot of fun and I'm looking forward to yoga again, hopefully.
All right.
Good stuff, yeah, keep it coming.
Yeah.
I need to do some yoga, my.
I need to do this too. I need to, that's what I'm thinking, I really gotta make it this year.
I have no excuse to not do this.
Let's go over to the Zumba.
Yeah.
I'll be honest, I have no business doing that.
All right. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve yoga at Hathaway Park every Wednesday from August 13th through August, through September 24th, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. All right, moving on. Agenda item eight. This is discussion of vote whether approve the summer concert series parking map. I'm looking at now. So this is a Sony bandstand, so all the parking is, everything in red?
Uh.
No parking, no, that's no parking. Sorry.
Yeah, so parking at like Town Hall, the church.
Hathaway Park.
It's crazy we have such a parking.
School street parking.
Like, for a town with so much space, we have no parking. It's crazy.
I think this makes sense because it's keeping people off of the road areas, that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe you worked with the police chief on this to develop it.
And Sergeant Ashley as well.
Trying to think.
Where is School Street? I've been in that church, I don't know how many times, I've never seen a road back there.
And the church has given you approval for this?
Yes.
Oh, that's nice.
That's huge.
That was really nice of them.
Oh my gosh, they're fantastic.
School street.
Such kind people.
Yeah. Yeah. That makes sense, right?
Is it any different than last year, really?
Uh, with the exception of the grandpa's parking lot.
Oh, no van parking, got it.
Yeah, I'm all that because it kind of got overzealous, we'll say that.
All right, makes sense.
And I put two, like, right in front of the, like, bandstand, like, guys who needed handicap parking, because that got a little tricky. I had Chuck bring like those signs, but even then, like, especially if people are trying to pull in and they don't have the handicap placard, then they have to back out in a very busy streets.
Yeah.
Other, people know right off the rip, that's designated parking.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, looks good to me, I think it's the best we can do under the, given the circumstances. All right?
Yep.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the summer concert series parking map.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. All right. And then agenda item nine, this is for the children's music program, which I also need to put this in my calendar, because I will be going to that. Uh, okay, so this is, agenda item nine, discussion of vote whether approve use of the bandstand on August 13th, 2025, from 1:30 to 4:00 PM for a children's music program facilitated by the library. That sounds awesome. There's no rain date?
They didn't provide one.
Should we put one in there for them? So they don't, they don't have to come back for approval? I don't know.
Wouldn't know when the vendor is available or.
Yeah, okay, don't, I always won't worry about it, but.
It's not gonna rain.
Ah, it's not gonna rain, not like that. Okay, any questions or concerns? Anyone have an issue with children's music festivals?
No, I'll see you there.
Or programs? Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of the bandstand on August 13th, 2025, from 1:30 to 4:00 PM for a children's music program facilitated by a library.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
27, if you want to jump to it.
Okay. 27. Are you here for 27 as well?
Yes.
All right. Well, we're gonna do you a solid here, this is a big agenda. All right, so, we're gonna skip down agenda item 27. So this is discussion of vote, proposed changes to the MBTA Communities Act zoning amendment.
Look at me, what I said. Um, so basically, we had brought this before the board earlier. Nancy worked really diligently on it, because we were short on time, and created this MBTA Communities Act zoning that we are required by the state to try to meet the density of 16 units per acre to get 750 additional units. But after reviewing it and going to the planning board meeting and realizing, obviously, we have a mixed use zone that allows commercial business in the zone, which is a great area for it, that it was all by right. No oversight whatsoever. We discussed and felt it was prudent to put in this, the businesses have by special permit. You still have to come before the planning board and just run it by them and go through, you know, the special permit process for a business. The housing is by right, because it needs to be by right to meet the Housing Communit, the Communities Act. So you'll see Nancy prepared this and highlighted what changed. It's just saying that you have to undergo a special permit for businesses in that PMUD zone.
Because you know, and that's really important, because you know that there are gonna be businesses that are, maybe have issues getting to some communities, are gonna immediately take advantage of this. If there's, they, they think they can bypass every single planning board and everything else, they're gonna target us and we'll have a bunch of businesses that we do not want in our town. Right, so that's, I think that's really great. Not, not that this is, I mean, I know it's an uphill battle for this to pass anyways, right? But unfortunately, we have some headwinds there.
There is some headwinds, my concern was if it didn't have that in there and it did get passed, because we don't know, I mean, we're all assuming that it's not going to pass, but maybe it will, I mean, I don't know. I'm having, you know, I'll, I'll have more information.
Okay.
I don't think we've actually felt the effects of what this is going to look like to the town as far as they're taking our grant monies away. We know that it's gonna take our regularly received grants away, which will run around $100,000 a year. That is not gonna be our biggest impact. You just heard Nancy ask, you know, she's putting in a grant for the Lula lift, that's, what are we asking for? A hun-
It's 170.
175. I mean, that's one of the things that we may not get.
Yeah, where I, where I, where I think it's really gonna impact us and I've, I don't know if I've done a great job of articulating this yet, but it is all those kind of design grants that you need in order to get the actual real money grant in order to do some kind of project.
So the planning.
So, so we won't even be able to get off the ground with some important, you know, like the COA library stuff, like we've gotten a lot of grants just to get the design together, so then we can go and try to get a federal grant or a state, you know? So it just, it kind of chops us off at the knees there, right? Where we can't even get started on stuff.
And we have a lot of grant applications in the works, right? So we've, we, the library grant is, we're in the middle of that one, but the construction piece of that, which is a big one. Nancy's working on this, the ADA grant, we're working on doing some road improvements over by Gurnee Road and
Yeah.
That, that's a big one too, that we're asking for, right?
Yeah, I don't have a dollar figure for that one as of yet. But that one will also get impacted, the four corners.
The four corners.
Area as well. And, and so many of the things that, you know, you need in order to make some of these improvements, it helps to have those extra dollars, that you wouldn't have to, the towns and, you know, people themselves wouldn't have to shoulder the burden, because they may need to be fixed.
Yeah.
Right, but those aren't guaranteed, that's one thing we have to let people know, it's, what I hear a lot out there is people are throwing the grant conversation in there. Yes, it's part of the conversation, it's not the full conversation. Can we deny, can we deny? Yes, but we also get them as well, right? So we don't know that, and there's also a mechanism now that you can go back to the state and say, hey, we got denied this grant, can we reapply? Can we have a, I mean, I'm not sure the process yet, but there's a way to go back to the state and ask them to reconsider the denial. So that's also part of the conversation.
Yeah, I don't know how that's gonna be, I know that they've been pretty specific about they're gonna take this grant money away and they're, they're actually talking about getting tougher and they actually they're actually setting up new grants for people who have passed the MBTA Communities Act. So they're gonna get a lot more money and so, but I, I mean, it's, we don't know for sure.
Yeah, I could see the, I understand the carrot. I, I don't, I don't really, I don't like the stick that they're using, right? Where to take away what we already have, right? But I understand giving incentive grants to other towns that do it, that makes sense to me, I can understand that. But yeah, regardless, we're not gonna solve that problem right now, but I think it is important to have this language in here to protect ourselves from, you know, if and when this does go through.
It was a great catch that it was caught.
Yeah.
It was added, so thank you guys.
I think it's, it was just one of those, you know, we, we had limited time to get this where it is at. But at least I figure if it passes, we're some protection for the town.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're ready to vote on those changes?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the proposed changes to the MBTA Communities Act zoning amendment.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes.
No, just, thank you.
All right, thanks Nancy, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so now I'm gonna jump back up to agenda item 10. Uh, this is discussion of vote whether accept donation from the Tuesday Club towards Boston Science Museum and Boston Children's Museum Discount Passes for the museum pass program in the sum of $300. That's awesome, any questions or concerns on this?
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the donations.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. Okay. Then item 11. Discussion of vote whether to approve the application for an event at Patch's Hill Farm on 6/21 through 6/22/2025? So you're here for this one?
Absolutely.
Brought some awesome RC cars?
Brought, brought a few examples, so we're, we're asking permission this year to, once again, at the farm, host an event, gathering of scale truck builders and enthusiasts to come out and it's basically a micro car show, think of it that way, so there's all kinds of different builds. We have construction equipment, we have trucks that go on the trails. We have different sized trucks, these are one tenths and these are one twenty-fourths, but we've got some trails set up throughout the property that, that people are able to drive the trucks on. We've got a few food vendors that are set up to come, we have Annie's Ice Cream scheduled to, to show up this year again and looking to, you know, just have another fun day at the farm.
Awesome, this is, how many years is this now?
So this is actually the third year that we've done it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome. Um, well, I'm excited, any, any questions or concerns?
Can I bring my own car?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
This, you got it, yeah, did you take care of permitting with Board of Health?
So I believe all the necessary paperwork was in, best of my knowledge, we had the Board of Health signature. I haven't seen the paperwork since it's gone around the town, so hoping to maybe find out tonight.
Okay, perfect, yeah, but beyond that, that sounds great to me. I only asked because it was signed off on and it says food permits required, so I just didn't know if the permits were issued or not. So that's, that's why I asked, just to get out ahead of it, so you didn't.
Our food vendors have an understanding that they have to get their town permit through the Health Department themselves. So I believe that we have the acceptance of the Health Department with those conditions that the individual food vendors still need to make sure that they've got all of their necessarily permits in place.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So all the other paperwork's in, good? All right, awesome. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to sorry, let me get to my right spot here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the application for an event at Patch's Hill Farm on 6/21 through 6/22/2025.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes, all set, thank you.
Thank you guys, luck.
Hope it works out well for you.
All right. Agenda item 12. This is for the, this is vote whether approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Cape Cod Aggregates Corp. for fiscal year 2026 for highway sand? I looked at, I didn't see it, is there a price in there, I just not see it?
$26 per ton.
You were awarded at the last meeting.
Okay, this is just the agreement, right?
Correct. 26 per ton.
I try to go through these contracts and just find the numbers, does it, you know, matters, but sometimes. This is a big packet, 235 pages, okay. So we all go with this, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement to the Town of Free Town and Cape Cod Aggregates Corp. For fiscal year 26, for highway, for highway sand.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. Next, we have ambulance abatements for April 2025 for, for $205,564.59. Any questions or concerns with that?
No.
Big number, but we, the chief did that analysis last time. And it's all relative. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April abatements. Right off the abatements.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slekman Lopes?
Yes.
Slekman Zager?
Yes.
Slekman Matthews?
Yes. Then item 14, this is to approve the agreement for the Lula lift. And it's what's start?
This is an extension of the agreement that we had. They did the, they did the engineering for the Lula lift. This is an extension of the agreement that we had, um, they did the, they did the engineering for the Lula Lift. In their agreement, they also are gonna do the, the bidding, uh, but they're, the um, contract's gonna expire. So this is an extension of that, so that, um, if we don't get the grant, um. We're still gonna move forward, I think if the town meeting vote approves the reallocation of the C O A funding. Um, with the Lula Lift, and either way, it has to go out to bid, you know, you know. So um, they'll do that paperwork for it, so we need to extend their contract until we know what we're doing.
Alright, sounds good. Alright, so with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Free Town and Stark Architects Inc. for architectural and engineering services for the Lula Lift at the Council Agent. Expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-six.
I have a motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, then item fifteen, discussion of vote whether approve the agreement to the Town of Free Town and Greater Beaufort Regional Refuse, Refuse. Management District for Solid Waste Disposal effective seven one twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-six, this is for the dump, right, for the uh. Crippo Hill?
Yep.
And uh. I, I read the email and that packet there, we're getting a nice, a good rate.
We are getting a good rate and. We're lucky that we can continue.
And so it's on, only another year contract, right?
Correct.
We wish we could get it longer, but that's all they're willing to, to offer.
Yes.
And there was one thing in there about uh, the trucks, like a, a new requirement that the trucks. They know what town it's from, so that we don't get charged for. I just wanna make sure that our, I mean, I'm sure Borges knows what's going on there.
I didn't see that.
So it's in the email, it says. Section ten point three running, um, labeling vehicles, what was added, this intent of the provision is to reduce the poten- potential that a. Hauler delivers waste from outside of the town or the town's account at the landfill and the town gets billed for it. Ten point three.
Okay, I see that.
Makes sense. It does make sense, I'm sure like, we, we, it's probably not a problem for us, cause I, like. You know, are, the trucks are labeled.
I will, I will make sure that uh, Borges is aware of this and that they, they comply with this.
Okay. Alright, great. So that, that's just wanna make sure we don't get caught off guard with that. Okay, so with that, I'll, um, I want to turn a motion to approve the agreement to Town of Free Town. And uh. Greater Beaufort Refus- refuse, am I saying that right, Management District for Solid Waste Disposal effective seven one twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-six.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, then item sixteen. Cooking here now, folks, um, this is discussion of awarding the O P M services for planning and design phase. Of the combined library C O A building. And. It's gonna be. So P three project planning came in, they, or they had the, the highest rating, right, of the three?
Right, it was a, um.
Quite the rating process.
Yes, it is quite the process, the committee voted to bring in four. Four of the eleven applications based on really their experience with C O As and libraries. In particular, the library grant, which is a very particular process as well, out of the, they brought in those four. They would did presentations in front of them, one had withdrawn, so there were three presentations, and then they ranked them, one through three. And uh, P three came up, ranked the highest, and then I negotiated with them and as long as I could negotiate a, a fair rate. For the town, um, we go into contract, so.
We don't have to go, but it's not necessarily by, in this, I.
It's not by money.
By, by money, which is one of the, this is one of those situations where we can.
In fact, money doesn't even, isn't even in their bid.
Yeah.
It's after the fact, but their bid came in very low, I think, in comparison to what other towns are doing, um. And, and I think that's surprising, con- considering we have a joint building, right, other towns are just doing the library. So the price was thirty thousand dollars, which I thought was more than fair for the amount of work that's involved here, in fact, I think it's really, a really good rate. But of course, their hope is to get the construction phase of this project.
Yeah, that makes sense, it, this is a loss leader for them.
So, yeah, this is, so this is just to get to know the town probably and the players involved, but um, so far so good. Uh, they seem to be good, and so that's where we're at.
Alright, great. So with that, um, I'll entertain a motion to award the O P M service for plan, for planning, services for planning and design phase. Of the combined library C O A to P three project planning.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, then item seventeen. Discussion of vote whether approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and P three project planning professionals for O P M services and planning. And design phase of combined library C O A building, as we just talked about, any questions or concerns?
No.
No. Okay, so with that, I want to turn a motion to approve the agreement between Sound Free Town and P three, um, project planning.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, then item eighteen, discussion of vote whether approve the quote and agreement between the Town of Free Town and Air Masters. For H V I C at the Town Hall. Air Masters is also the name of a snowboard company? Nice packet, very slow here.
They're gonna put in, I think, two mini splits on the second floor of the Town Hall, um, so that we have central air conditioning.
That sounds exciting.
Heat, i- it will also help with heat, so. We've met them out there on site.
So, yeah, I, I noticed one thing, it said the, the excluded items, the asbestos testing, the abatements, which is that, is that just kinda common? Language, cause I know we've run into issues with that in the past at the Town Hall.
Yep, um, that, and we're gonna have to build the chase and chase for the pipes, because they, we didn't want all these pipes running all over the outside of the building. Being it's a historical building.
Yeah.
So they're gonna run them through the attic and then down, down into the basement and out the back. So we need to build a chase, so there are pieces of this that we will have to work on getting done, that are outside of the contract.
Okay, and then another part of it, so it's like. They, they're gonna go and facilitate the uh, mass save rebate?
Yes.
And so it's like, it's fifteen grand in the contract, like, that is. How does that work?
That'll go directly to them, as you'd see with the contract price, I put the, the amount minus that rebate, so that they can't get more than what. They have to get that rebate for themselves.
They have to get it, and i- is there any recourse if they can't get it for one reason or another?
They're not getting paid any more than they, they're out of the, um.
Perfect. Any question, concerns on that?
Oh, I like that idea.
I guess my question is, does it say we're getting four mini splits, two Mitsubishi indoor units, and, okay, sorry, there, one's the heat and then the outdoor units. So not, they're not the same one, there are t- four different units gonna be outside?
So phase one, the upstairs.
Okay.
You want to be up in the attic.
Okay.
Then might probably drop them onto the second floor. And for the downstairs, I come up from the cellar, from the outside into the cellar, and then up to the floors.
Okay, so we won't see them if you're driving by and everything else?
We, we, we'll be in the back of the building mostly, you won't see the side or the front.
Okay. Yeah, my concern was the, the whole historical piece of the, the building, we don't wanna. Not that they're ugly, cause they're, they kinda are, as far as the units themselves, but at the end of the day, the comfort of the employees is the most important thing. And the visitors, of course, which is our town residents. Thank you.
Alright. So this looks reasonable. Any question, concerns, anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so for then item eighteen, so um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the quote and agreement between Town of Free Town and Air Masters for H V I C at the Town Hall.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, then item nineteen, discussion of vote awarding the installation and ongoing support of a fiber optic municipal area network bid. Is this the one, I saw the bids were like five hundred thousand dollars off?
Uh huh, I get more than that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, more than that, so we got two different bids. Cavcom LLC was at one point one, one point three million, and then Comtrack was four hundred and sixty thousand. That seems weird.
It does.
Same. I mean, is this, is like, do we have a well-defined kind of, uh.
Yeah, we actually paid for someone to create the whole bid documents, so it's pretty much in there, but there are a lot of unknowns, and I think that. When you get into these projects, I think the second bidder was just putting a lot of padding in case. Because they didn't know what they were gonna get into.
Or they really didn't want the project for some, one reason or another, I did, I've done that before, and actually got the project unfortunately. Dealing with repercussions right now.
So.
Cause yeah, to be off nine hundred and, almost nine hundred thousand dollars is crazy.
Yeah.
It's just.
Yeah.
Well, it's good if it means that they, we're gonna get the.
One of the things that I put in there that was that, the town, like, it's all on them. They can't come back to the town for police details, they can't come back to the town for X, Y, and Z, because that's where you really get into trouble, right? It's a big project, and so I think that's why the second company really. Wanted to make sure they were okay, you know what I mean, you get prevailing wages, you might have police details all over the place, some places you might have to go underground, all of it. I wanted them to, to take on them, so that they're, they're, cause there's no room for the town, it is what it is, we only have what we have for our budget. Um, so I think that's why when you don't, there's, there were, I think things they were afraid they were gonna run into that, and they couldn't come back and charge us for.
So, just to be clear, so what, what are we, like. Are we recommending Comtrack here, the, the way cheaper one, okay, just wanna make sure on the same page. Okay. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No, that's a great project.
Yeah.
It's excited for it.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the installation and ongoing support of a fiber one, fiber one, fiber optic municipal area network bid. To Comtrack, in total, con- quote detail is four hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-five dollars, forty-four cents.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, then item twenty, discussion of vote whether approve and sign the quote from Door and Glass Innovations. For the A D A front door installation at the Town Hall, well, here's four grand, I wanna say, three thousand nine hundred dollars. Any questions or concerns with this?
No, that's a great price.
Yeah, I just, I just got like triple the price to put a French door in my house. I need to talk to these guys. Alright. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the quote from, uh, for, from Door and Glass Innovations for the A D A front door installation at Town Hall.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes. Alright. Then item twenty-one, discussion of vote whether approve and sign the estimate from um, Garnet Well and Pump Services, Garnet, am I saying that right? Uh, for Washburn Library well repairs. Four thousand eighty-nine dollars.
This is for the pump, right, we had to put a new well in at um, the White Library. And this is the pump that I think goes along with that.
Seems reasonable, any questions or concerns?
No, this is the individual, he's a machine, I don't know if you ever had Garnet come to your house, he's a older gentleman, but he is, he moves.
Mm-hmm.
So good for, like, I'm glad to see him on the, on this estimate.
Alright.
Good guy.
Alright, so with that, I want to turn a motion to uh, approve and sign the estimate from Garnet Well and Pump Services for. Washburn Library well repairs.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slockman Loops?
Yes.
Slockman Zager?
Yes.
Slockman Matthews?
Yes, okay, so I think we're at seven o'clock, so we'll stop here at then item twenty-two, we'll do the hearing. And then we'll come back to this. Alright, so we're, are we unsure whether I have to read the whole hearing or not? I don't think we got clarity on that, I'm gonna, I'll start with caution and read it.
Okay.
Not sure if I have to actually read the public hearing or not, but I'm gonna do it, just in case we do. Alright, so this is a public hearing notice from four fifteen twenty twenty-five, continued from three eighteen. Uh, twenty twenty-five to five five twenty twenty-five, and then now to five nineteen twenty twenty-two, twenty-five. Verizon New England Inc. and N Star Electric Company D V A EverSource Energy, um. EverSource Energy requests permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys, and other such standing and protecting fixtures. To be owned and used in con- in common by your petitioner along and across the following public way or ways. Chase Road installing one J O mid-span pole on the east side of Chase Road. Dash J O P fifty-two and a half, the new pole will be installed in line with approximately thirty feet. Uh, in line with an approximately thirty feet south of existing pole J O P fifty-two and approximately one hundred and one feet north of existing pole. J O P fifty-three, installation is being requested by EverSource to support three new three-phase service to eighty-nine Chase Road. And to provide the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint and identical location for. And permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables, together with anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protective features as they may find necessary. Said pole be erected uh, substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked one A seven W E. Uh, B dated February tenth twenty twenty-five, also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires. And above or intersecting public ways for the public purpose of making connections uh, with such poles and buildings. As each of said petitioners may desire for distribu- distributing purposes. Uh, your petitioner agrees that space shall be reserved and maintained for limited purpose of ink, uh, attaching one-way low voltage wires. And police wires owned by municipality or government, governmental entity for public safety purposes only. And a public hearing will be able to discuss, uh, will, public hearing to discuss this request will be held on May fifth twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Police Station P A Room, Free Town. Alright, so the, with that, open the public hearing, um. We have.
Continuing with the public.
I'm sorry, continuing the public hearing, spoke there. Alright, so where do we start here? Carl, I know you're here on, for this.
This evening, you also have Kate Rugman on the line, I'm not sure whether, my colleague Mike, um, was the representative last time. So I just wanna make sure somebody's here as well, as I know he had some scheduling conflicts here for Verizon.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, where, so I, I think I missed the last hearing we had on this?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, the, the, Verizon has um, hired a consultant to come in and get a pole put in on Chase Road. Um, eighty-nine Chase Road, they were, uh, so this is a, a hearing for that, I think we have Town Council on Zoom as well. Um. This hea- it, this hearing is pretty much about that, but of course, concerns came up during that meeting at eighty-nine Chase Road.
Yeah.
So, um. The, the meeting was continued until some, some more information could be brought forth. But one of my concerns is that this is just about the pole, so I think that really you need to talk about the pole, I know there's some issues at eighty-nine Chase Road. And both our health agent and our building commissioner are here to tell you where they stand with um, some further follow-up. After getting the complaints about eighty-nine Chase Road. But at the end of the day, the pole, unless, you know, the board deems that it's not safe to put this pole, which is your prerogative to determine that. It really is not gonna be based on what the use of the electricity being hung on the pole is, is, is going to be um, used for. So I don't know if you wanna discuss the pole and whether you feel that it's safe in the public roadway, um, and start there, or you want to um. Allow the um, some public to put some input and, and, and their cons-. You know, voice their concerns, cause they've come here consistently, and let the building inspector or commissioner and health agent. Just discuss where they're at, because they have been working diligently on these complaints and, and following up on them. Um, and they, they have a little bit, you know, they came tonight to let you know where they're at with that.
Yep. Yeah. Yes, somebody wanna fill me in where we stand? Yeah, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Can you just hit your microphone?
We've received. We've received complaints about the general area for months now. Probably goes back a year, we investigate the complaints as they come in. Uh, the biggest complaints we had were, and again. Uh, this is a poll hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Understood.
Okay, so I got called in. Uh, to just let you know where I stand, I forwarded immediately after that meeting, and I'll apologize to the board. Apparently, there was an omission from a date on a inspection form. So that there's no confusion, it's an electronic document, I simply went back in my computer and found the date it was generated, so. Hopefully, that clears up any confusion that might have been caused by the date not being on there. There are other inspections that I've also forwarded to you, just some of them, not all of them. Additionally, have I forwarded the meeting minutes where I've brought this issue up to my Board of Health? And asked them to go out and do an inspection and, and to look into this and, and other things. So, while there might not be a banner waving overt action that we go around thumping our chest that, hey, look at what we're doing today. Rest assured that as they come in, they're taken with the same uh. Seriousness as any other, and they're looked at no matter who it is. Um, and again, you will see that I brought this to the intention of the Board of Health.
Mm-hmm.
Multiple times over the last several months. Um, this past Friday, the Board of Health Chairwoman, Margaret French, went out with myself. Um, as a follow-up to the, your poll hearing. So. That's where it stands currently with the Board of Health.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Alright, uh, so, Mr. Mello, I know you're here, this is your, this is uh, on your property, right, that, that this. Yes. So, Doc, why don't you kind of just talk to us about why you need, why the pole needs to be moved, and just give us a little background?
Uh, so that we don't have to cross someone else's property. I, I put up a building, uh. On that part of eighty-nine Chase Road, and I just need to get power to it. It, it's that basic and simple, I, I, I'll answer any questions you got, but.
I, I appreciate it, so.
So, yeah, it's Frank Bergeron, I'm probably the reason why everybody's here. Just a really quick summary, I'm not gonna go into big details, but in the past, our neighbor, there was a lot of issues there, and we continued to say. Maybe the town officials are seeing what we're seeing, something's gonna be done, but years would go by, months, years, decade goes by. Nobody does anything, so then you start to say, when is something gonna happen, this is previous to you, Carl. Yeah, I, I always say.
Administration.
Exactly, and I'm gonna, I, I, like I said, whatever I say, I'd say to someone's face, I am not, I'm not, I'm not, not saying things, but.[1717.86] so I have nothing bad there, but what I'm trying to say is, if you just sit by and say, well, the town officials will probably do something. Nothing has happened in the past. So we were called here for this Butters meeting. I, I, I understand the pole. The pole is the symbol, but what's the pole for? Because you just said it's been going on for a year. What steps? Like, the smell is ridiculous at times. It's ridiculous. And everybody, there's multiple complaints. You guys know the probably the exact number, but how many neighbors have said enough already? When I said, is this, is this three-phase for recycling? Ms. Petty said, there's no recycling going on over there. I said something about seashells. It's like, oh, you can have seashells. I don't see why you can't. Seashells with meat and um decomposing. So at what point though, John, like, do you denigrate the neighborhood where you can't have a picnic? You can't, you don't know what the afternoon's gonna bring or the day's gonna bring because when you step outside and now what we're gonna have a, a three-phase tub grinder grinding up all those pallets. So the question is, what is happening? Because if we don't say it now, when do we say it? Just keep letting it happen and say, maybe the town officials will do something. Because I've said to these guys, I'm like, if I do something on my property in the past, if you get a letter from, it's like, you have thirty days to comply. You have X amount to this, or this happens. When you say, oh, years gone, I'm like, oh, they say we're working on it. I'm like, what are you wor- like, what are the steps? Nobody else gets that kind of language.
Frank, thank you for the input, and now we'll address it, whatever I can do and explain. There isn't
Okay, Joe, go ahead. You speak, you speak.
I'm gonna speak to the board.
Hey, Joe, just to give you a heads up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you speak, but this is a poll hearing and I, we're
This is the only way we can get everybody together.
I understand, but I have to
Have the poll, and I'm not, I'm not rejecting the poll.
Otherwise, we're going off of the agenda.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
You brought us here.
How many times?
Sorry.
Kevin. If, if Mr. Bergeron would approach the, the Board of Health, who might actually have something to do in this, in this instance, would have some sort of authority. And maybe if he'd asked me the questions, I could educate him on what we do and the process, right? Everybody doesn't want the government in their lives until they want the government in their lives, and when they do, they want it right then and there. Little thing called process, due process, that we are to afford everybody, no matter who they are, no matter what station in life they have. All right? So again, some of the complaints that are being brought up before me, before Carl, before this administration. I can tell you that Carl and I, with respect to other uh um houses or other lots in that area, we formed a team with others, including fire and police and the dog, uh, excuse me, animal control officer. And we approached those things that way. There are courts, there are things that we have to do. By law, we have to afford uh, you know, opportunity to rem- to, to, to remedy the situation.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, there are certain things that we as local officials can do, but then there's certain authorities that boards and committees have to do. And Mr. Bergeron has to understand that we elect those folks to do a job. And so his remedy might not be necessarily with the official that's sitting here, right? The remedy might be at a greater, which would then require counsel and other things to look at. So I've invited the Board of Health members to go out and get involved with this. I've invited them to go out and take a look at it. Margaret went out there. If you go back and again, look at the minutes, this has been brought to people's attention. We have in fact listened to the complaints. I have in fact gone out there and tried to meet with John, other farmers and other folks in the area to remedy, to the point where I've had the folks that have complained come up to me and say, thank you. The birds are no longer an issue. Right? And that they haven't noticed the smells. Now, I will caveat this before I'm, I'm done talking about this tonight, right? Again, poll hearing. There's a law, there are several laws, but the farmers have rights too, okay? Under the state sanitary code, any smells, odors, noises, dust, and things like that that are associated with a normal agricultural uh of operation are exempt from being decided that they're a nuisance. Okay, under the chapter one eleven, we have a nuisance
Even outside of a right to farm.
Because that Like outside a right to farm, if you have an agricultural use, so
I don't know that, so.
Bottom line, if you live near a farm and it smells like a farm.
Yeah, understood.
State has said and it's laid out, and again, I would afford anybody who approached me and I would provide that information.
I got it, Kevin.
All right, you got it, right?
Below nuisance, but if it's above nuisance, like rotten
So again, Mr. Chairman, I'm addressing this to the board.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So um, at the end of the day, I'm not saying there aren't remedies. I'm not saying there aren't room for improvements everywhere across the board, not just with this one location, but others that I have encouraged our town leaders even prior to having a separation of the Board of Selectmen from the Board of Health to invest in their authority and take action where you can and as necessary. So I will continue to do that. We're inviting council to come down to one of our Board, uh Board of Health meetings to reinvigorate that statement, so to speak, and maybe educate the Board of Health members on what their authority is and how they can utilize it. Um, but as we have have, we have people here that are clearly upset. I've also gotten compliments that whatever is happening, and it's not just Mr. Melo, I have talked with other farmers in the area to try to help out with what they're doing too, because I've noticed that there may be that. So I will end it on, on that, that we are there, we will go out and do our, my job, but I can only go so far as an appointed official.
Understood.
Nice.
Yeah, it's, it's, Carl, do you want, I mean, let's, I, I was trying to cut off Mr. Mello there, so I'll let him say his case, and then, and then we'll try to get back to the, to the poll.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I feel for Frank, and I would like to address anything that he has. You talk to me, we take care of business. I don't need any board. I, I appreciate, I value the board, but in the meantime, I, I can get it done.
We've talked before, John.
Yes, year, how many years ago, Frank?
I said, make all you want.
Yes, you have.
Point, yeah, I said it, but at some point, I have a right too.
Allow me
So is everybody.
Allow me to make a move or at least let me explain what's going on, the pole use. I've heard every story from a grinder to this and that. It's, that building is either to uh a small little bagging thing, like a manual bagging thing. That's why we need electric or hay storage, or it's, that's only seasonal. You're only gonna sell that product uh at a two or three months a year. So then the rest of it we can use to maintain well uh farm equipment attachments, this and that. I want to assure you, I am publicly saying this, everything that I'm doing, I want to try to improve it. It, to me, it's fairly close to Frank's house, which Frank's house was part of the farm at one time, right?
Well, in this, the, the, the point to this too, when Kevin was here, I lived here way before this farm was going, no
No, that farm's been going for two hundred years. Your lot is a part of it.
There, that's what I'm saying.
That is correct, and we're gonna try to, I would like to
I'm, I'm used, I grew up on a dairy farm. We all
Yeah, let's let, let's let Mr. Mello kind of get
But you gotta give me a chance to talk, Frank.
Go ahead.
Please. What I'd like to do, we're enhancing in the back, we were building loading docks, things like that. We're gonna move what's by Frank's house. I'm looking to move it out back, further out back. Um I would like to dress up the front. I want this town to be very proud of what we're gonna build for a farm there. That's my goal. I'm not looking uh to develop the property. If I can't run the farm, well, then we'll develop it, but my goal is not to. I think we've tried very hard to produce some uh all-natural, healthy beef, uh where, we're doing it, and I think we can uh improve quite a bit to make uh I consider my friends my neighbor. I want him very comfortable.
That's a good policy, right?
No, it's the only way, really.
Yeah. Um, okay, is that, is, are you, you're done?
And if you have any questions about the pole, but I did explain the use, why we're bringing three-phase, the only reason of moving the pole, I, I mean, Frank applied for electric, I applied for electric, we all apply.
Yeah.
But you ha- they have to move the pole so that it can go right in.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it's, it's all become abundantly clear that the pole is the sticking point, i- is what's brought this kind of situation to light. I don't think it's about the pole. I think it's about the bigger picture, but uh, you know, we are where we are now, so um, I'm gonna let Carl go and, and speak to any kind of input you have on this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So uh, I think what's important is we have total transparency in anything we do. My job is to slow it down a little bit, make sure it's transparent, we get all the information we have. So I have no conclusions about what's going on, but I have some concerns. How many trucks will be generated? How much noise, dust? Uh, what kind of materials? How much materials are bringing in? John and Mr. Mello, to his credit, he's offered the, whatever I needed to look in the farm, he's giving me unfettered access to any way I want to look. So we have that kind of relationship, and I appreciate that from Mr. Mello. Again, it's still an investigation. We still need more information about exactly what the end product will be. What are we getting out of this? Again, how many trucks? How much material? How much material is actually from the farm and not from outside? What are we doing here? Again, slow it down. Let's collect all the information. Let's be totally transparent, and let's share that with everybody. And we will have some conclusion at the end.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So this came through the Board of Health, ah, gosh, late fall, early, early um winter this past year, twenty twenty-four. So during this poll conversation, neighbors were here at the Butters, and they discussed, and they told us what, what to me was a quality of life issue, right? They own a property. They want to be able to go outside and have a barbecue, throw the ball around, things like that. I, as I stated, I was gonna reach out to Mr. Mello. Mr. Mello and I have spoken various, numerous times on the phone as far as getting out there, look, take a look at the property, asking him about the pole, what the generate use are, but ultimately letting him know that this is a quality of life as well. He has a right to farm. You have a right to live in your property, right? Simple as that. He, for our conversation, we, I expressed to him our concerns for the neighbors, for the neighborhood. He, he thought the same thing. He, and I wanted him here so that he could ask and answer questions and get that person feeling back versus just going through us or through the board and, and getting secondhand information. I wanted him here so that we can get direct information directly from him, so we know what's going on. And he agrees that you should be able to go outside and barbecue, enjoy your property, and so on, so forth. So we have to find a way to get there as neighbors, right? As a Board of Health or a Board of Selectmen, we have, we have some, we have authority, but then it's also your neighbors at the end of the day. How do we fix this as neighbors first? So he has said he will do as needed, and from other complaints, he has mitigated those issues. So I, I'm gonna hold you to that, Mr. Mello, right, and to the neighbors, work together as a team. Right? And figure out what we can do to make this not go away in a sense, but you have to live there. All right, unless you're selling your property tomorrow, you have to live there, so it's a quality of life. And I, he's assured me that he's gonna work, he's doing everything he can. It, but it starts with probably the neighbors letting him know, hey, this is what I see, this is what I don't see. Because I don't see him riding around the property all day, right? Unless you do, good for you, and I'm gonna be out there someday once I get out of this chair, right? Because he extended that, if, that to me as well, so we can go look and see for ourselves. Work together as neighbors as, as best as possible. He said he's, he stated here publicly that he's gonna do as many things as possible to make the neighborhood better.
Not to interrupt you, but I would rather be a good neighbor
Yes.
to Frank, and, and I mean that.
And I appreciate
Then let's, let, right here.
Yeah, let's, let's, because uh, uh, this talk is uh great, okay? But it's administrative speaking, like, we're doing lots of things and many things, and lots of stuff is gonna happen, and it's all gonna be good. When it's all said and done, we're gonna do a nice thing. What did we just say? The source of the smell is rotten fruit, or that, that's, that's an actionable thing. You, you, get rid of it. Get rid of the rotten fruit.
Half redo, no, we, you must have noticed we've reduced a lot.
I, well, the thing is, you can get a little paranoid, because like, oh, I had these meetings, things seem to be getting a little better once we had these meetings, but, but my point is, I'm like, that is why I've got to this blowing point of like, the pole brought me here because I'm like, when is somebody gonna do something? Because you know how many town people, John, say stuff? From the mailwoman delivering the mail to, people come over to my house just for one time and be like, what's that? What the heck's this? What the heck's that? It's like, it's not, it's, but people act like it's kind of a secret. I'm like, it's not a secret. And so all you have to do is take a walk on the farm and see, they say, Wally's standing in rotten watermelon sometimes up to his knees. Right? So there it is. Get your back out, get your loader and get that the hell out of there.
We're, we're moving that process away from you, but, but also Frank
That's the actionable stuff.
Frank and I have fought to improve the neighborhood. I, I acquired the house next to him, which this town went through an awful lot of trouble. All of us did.
Yeah.
We went through the most
Yes.
Sort of
You were the Yes, but now
Now this.
Now I own it, and I'm also acquiring, so two of his neighbors I've acquired, which was originally part of the original farm. I, I, I will go over my plans with Frank. I, I want everything much better, in a much better way.
Please.
I said, John, I'm
Easy as that.
I will, like, I'm not, I didn't come down here. I said it to them. I say, I'll, I'm not backstabbing. I'm, I'll talk to you face to face, anybody. Because I've been held to things. That's all I'm asking is like
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
No, no, I'm
And make it
I want to do it for Frank in the first place. He's my closest neighbor, but um, not a problem. None of this is a problem.
Because to me, this is small money compared to your operation, so why ruin your whole operation for small money?
Allow me to show you a couple of things that's coming.
All right. Think this is good.
Thank you.
Let's, let's, let's
So then the last thing.
Yeah.
If there is a problem, who do I call or where do we go?
You should, first, first try calling John, first try calling John Mello.
First, Mr. Bergeron, you did come to the office.
I did.
And I did call John, and that following week, we did meet. He was on, he came back, so there's a process going on.
Okay.
You know, so we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah.
So the ticket we're holding is certificate of occupancy, for those buildings to be occupied in the business or non-business or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we haven't given out yet.
Yeah.
And to get all the information, all the facts, and we do according to what's prescribed by the billing code and law, that's what we'll do. Not whether you like Mr. Mello, he likes you, we're gonna follow the law.
Follow the rules.
We'll get all that information, we can have a conclusion, and that will be made public at that time.
I think this starts a great improvement, especially
It's, like I said, John, I'm
I can make Frank, you're all set.
You're not leaving town, and I'm not leaving tomorrow either, so I'm not, but I'm looking to resolve it before it gets crazy.
Yeah, guaranteed, I'll give my blood to make it better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. So I think we're gonna close the public hearing now. This is, yep. Yep.
Is it a, can I do another additional item or?
Uh, if it's not related to the poll, can't, can't do it, is
That would be public input at the end of the meeting.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll come back to it at the end of the meeting, for sure. Um, all right, so without, uh, I have to make a motion to close the public hearing, don't I?
Yeah.
I always forget this one.
Unless you're gonna take more information.
No, so I think we're good. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zagar?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Do I have a, a gen, I'm here to vote on?
Yeah, I think it's the last
Last page.
Thirty, is it?
So we're
Number thirty.
Yeah. So with this, so um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from EverSource and Star to add uh a pole at eighty-nine Chase Road, East Rite Town Mass.
With the, with the um updated language for allowing the town to use that, which Luann does have that, but I just want to make sure that gets put in there.
At the last meeting, there was some stuff about us being able to use the pole for a transmission of uh
For any government purposes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it makes sense. It, I think that I might have uh, rather than just being police, we made it more broad, is that what happened?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for EverStore and Star to add a pole eighty-nine Chase Road with the East Rite Town Mass with the updated language um related to the municipal use of the pole.
Uh, motion made.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zagar?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, all right. Okay, now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna jump back.
Mr. Chair, this is
Yes.
It's Rogers Marriage from K P Law. Uh, I was here and standing by, but I take it you don't need me for anything else?
No, you, okay, that, you, you skated right through. Congratulations.
That's the, the best way we can contribute is uh by, you know, providing our, our silent support. So um, if there's anything you need to follow up, just let me know.
All right, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so back to a gen, item twenty-two. So we have a bunch of transfers. So discussion of vote whether approve the following requests for appropriation transfers between or within departments for A. Town prop custodial P F T salary to town prop custodial P F T salary in the sum of one thousand thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, B, highway department P F T salary wa- salary, wow, salary wages to highway additional gross overtime in the sum of five hundred dollars. C, conservation commission professional and tech consulting to conservation agent P P T salary wages in the sum of twenty thousand dollars. Library tech salary wages to additional gross overtime in the sum of fi- three thousand five hundred Wow. Three hundred fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents. E, police officer salary wages to additional gross overtime in the sum of seventy thousand dollars. Old Colony vocational educational assessment to Bristol Aggie um agriculture school assessment, the sum of fifty-two cents. That's the smallest transfer I've ever seen.
Seen, yeah.
Uh, G, election worker payroll to town clerk, uh, town clerical O T in the sum of six hundred and seventy-five dollars. H firefighter um P P T to uh slash salary wages to fire additional gross overtime in the sum of forty-five thousand dollars. And that is all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any question or concerns? It's just that time of year, right? We had to move money around.
So those were all interdepart, like interdepartment, that's
Yeah, just one line on to the other.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good?
Fifty percent.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the requests listed in A through H on the agenda.
Uh, motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Fleckman Zagar?
Yes.
Fleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, agenda item twenty-three. Acknowledge the following reserve fund transfers. So this is not voting on, just acknowledging.
Yep.
Fire repairs and maintenance uh vehicles in the sum of twenty-five thousand. Moderator salary in the sum of a hundred and eighty bucks. HVAC is town properties, R and M, in the sum of fifty thousand dollars, which Luann told me what R and M stands for.
Roads and maintenance?
Roads and maintenance?
It's repairs and.
Apairs.
Apairs.
There's a maintenance.
That makes more sense.
This is that, that's Carl, that's that's um, that's facilities budget.
That's right, yeah, that's what that's what it looks like. And there was just a bunch of like septic problems, like unforeseen.
A lot of big.
Expenses that popped up.
HVAC.
Yep. Um, and then D, Town Treasury Department Assistant Account in the sum of five thousand one hundred dollars. Alright, any questions or concerns with that?
No.
Alright, we'll move on. Uh, agenda twenty-four, discussion of vote whether approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six omnibus budget. One thing I did notice on this. Is that I think the first line, the first part page of the budget. I thought I saw a discrepancy between the Finance Committee approval and the Board of Selectmen approval.
I don't know if Finance Committee has approved it yet. So that may be last year's number that's on there. Finance Committee hasn't done the omnibus budget yet. Okay, Luann, you better give me some cheaters too. Could we make it smaller?
So.
It's just zooming in on.
I'm zooming in. That was the same, maybe it wasn't the first page.
The, well.
I know they haven't voted on it yet, so um. So those might be, I'm not sure if we made a change, they just haven't seen yet. And maybe Matt thought they had already voted, but they haven't voted on the budget yet anyway.
I think page two I thought was different. That's what it was. What is this?
Well, the yeah, the bottom line number does come out, department totals is is off, so.
That's what it was.
Two, so there's gotta be a difference somewhere.
Like, well, what what the what I immediately thought was that we have a a summing issue in the Excel that's using to power this. Because I couldn't see anything that looked different. Okay, no. I see it.
Where is it?
Town clerk, so it's line one sixty-one, Personnel Total. It's just a slight delta. It's like, we have one fifty-three, two forty-two, they have one fifty-four, nine oh nine.
Been um, some of the budget, um. Yes, when I put in, when she had her request, what she requested and what I was recommending when I, when I wrote on her budget sheet. Was I was trying to keep her percentage of increase in pay at a certain percentage to fall in line with everything else. Um, but. The FinCom has not, I think they actually approved the her raise as requested, because that's an article.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So she, it has been approved, so this will just have to get changed. But I know the FinCom hasn't voted on the omnibus as a as a whole. So until they vote, those those might change, but you're voting on the um. The the department requesting budgets.
Okay. Alright, I'm good with that. Any any questions or concerns?
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six omnibus budget.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fleckman Loops?
Yes.
Fleckman Zagar?
Yes.
Fleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, uh. Ten and twenty-five, discussion of vote whether approve raises and stipends for bylaw employees as approved and omnibus budget fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. We already kind of.
This has to be, and it has to be subject to funding, right? Because of the town votes.
Yeah.
Don't. Doesn't really matter whether you give people raises or not.
They can't, they can't pay them, right?
Yeah, we can't pay them, so.
Alright, so without, I'll entertain a motion to appro- uh, approve the raises and stipends for bylaw employees as approved. And omnibus budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Subject to funding, yeah.
Subject to funding, yeah. Um, sorry. I got a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Fleckman Loops?
Yes.
Fleckman Zagar?
Yes.
Fleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, agenda twenty-six, acknowledge the disclosure of of an appearance of conflict of interest from Joshua Simmons. His uncle also works for the Highway Department. Um, but they don't, yeah, that doesn't seem like an issue to me. We 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 live in Freetown, it's gonna happen a lot. Alright, well, yep, it's good. Appreciate the conflict of interest disclosure. So without, we don't have to vote on that, we're just acknowledging it. Alright, so now I will kick it over to Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, Personnel Board, item general twenty-eight, discussion and vote on time clock technology expiring and how to proceed. Alright, so this kinda started not too long ago, um, one, it's expiring, but we also, there's different procedures at different places in town. And this is a attempt to kinda put it all together, all the same usage, people clocking in and out the same, right? Uh, right now, as it says in our, on our um, paperwork, you know, we have the COA Town Hall Annex, um. They're using this option, which is the employee clock in, like the portal that they have. So moving forward, how we, how do we wanna do this, right?
Well, the time clock technology is phasing out, so it's no longer gonna be supported, I believe, at the end of the year. So we can purchase a new time clock for a thousand dollars at the Town Hall. Um, or we can push them all over to logging in on their computer and just logging in and off on their computer. But one of the other issues is, I know it's a um, it's 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 controversial, right? We have department heads that don't wanna punch in and out. I have employees that don't wanna punch in and out. So I thought it would be a good opportunity to discuss that, because when I first started here, it was a big deal to get everybody on time clock punching in and out. I worked very hard to do that. It was not an easy lift, um, because people didn't wanna do it. They don't, they don't like change, they didn't wanna do it. Um, so at this point where 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 the time clock's going to be phased out. I thought it would be a a good opportunity to discuss what the board wants to do moving forward. Um, do you wanna keep it in place and 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 try to make it more equitable, so that everybody's punching in and out on their computer or their phone? Or do you wanna give it up and not have it anymore? I don't know the answer to that, but I thought I would ask the question since I'm getting so much. Um, pushback about it.
Thank you. Well, I think the the basic conversation we and we can have is, one, they're town employees. The town requires ABC, and that's what employees need to do. Time clock punching in and out is a very basic thing. Doesn't, it's 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 part of the job. So I think that's a basic thing that we can sta- put out there saying, hey, the town requires this, this is what you need to do, right? They're employees of the town. Right? Whether they they change or not, I understand that. But in a day, the town requires things to get done in an appropriate and transparent manner. And time cards are pretty, pretty basic. You you either worked or you didn't work, or you took time off or you didn't, right? We have to make sure we account for that. So how do we do that? The most basic way possible, but the most efficient way possible as well. So that's the conversation at hand.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm okay with having a time clock. I like, you know. Transparency of everyone showing when they're in, I.
Like, how hard is it to like, like, so it's funny, it's ironic, cause I right before this meeting, I yelled at for not putting my time in. I'm guilty on this.
Every other week, myself is concluded.
So I get it. Um, but the, like. Buying this thing, this like device, right? Like where you don't need to do that, right? You can just go like.
Right, we have the device now. You come in, you fob in with the, you put your fob in, it locks, you know, it clocks you in. When you leave, you fob out and it clocks you out on your time, you know, creates a timesheet for you. That's the only purpose it's used for. It's not connected with our payroll system. It's not used that way, even if it is. Um, the time clock itself is gonna be phased out. Yes, you can log on to your computer and clock in, and some people do that. Some people do clock in on their computer, you just log into, it's like an app on your computer. You could probably put it on your phone. Would you put it on your phone?
You could, cause it's on internet. They all go on, uh, when you do your payroll, you go on and you print your timesheets, so you print out your fobs. On that system already, so they all have credentials there. I'll use it for that right now.
Okay.
And I think.
I'll respect the highway.
Yeah, highway, I wouldn't go there with that.
Highway doesn't work.
They don't have computers, so I don't really have access.
COA does it, um, the Highway Department, including the transfer station, does not do it.
The Annex does.
Excuse me, the Annex, the Town Hall employees do. So I think that's one of the things is that employees feel like it's not consistently applied. Because the Highway Department doesn't need to do it, and of course, police and fire are separate, they don't do it either. Um, so that's where the where the discrepancy comes in, and I don't necessarily need to have an answer tonight. But I figured I'd bring the subject up, because um, there's been a lot of internal discussions about it. And I don't wanna spend the money on a time clock if it's something that the board's gonna ultimately say, nobody has to punch in. Or um, you know, or and I don't have a problem with them all going to using their computers to punch in and out.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but like. It's it's funny that they're gonna try to charge a thousand dollars for a piece of hardware that they're sunsetting.
Right.
Seems a little ridiculous. Why don't you just give it to us, right?
Well, I guess it's like a new version of the time. The one we have is. It does say purchase here, but I I believe like it's in the treasurer's budget every year, we have to pay that thousand dollars for the one that we have now.
No.
No?
We owe it. We don't pay that. We pay a monthly fee for, you know, for hoppers in general.
Oh, that must be it, okay.
Alright, I don't know. Do we need a vote? Do we need to make a call tonight? I mean.
It doesn't have to be tonight, but we to, we should definitely make it soon. And then think about police and fire as well. Do we have them punch in? Uh, or even highway. So we need to be consistent across the board. That's the one thing we've heard about is it's inconsistent. This is our attempt to make it black and white, right? Um, how far we go? So something to think about, I guess, is do we do the entire, all employees and not and not skip out any department? Or or office. Everybody needs to do it.
So in the short term, I guess the question would be, do we buy another time clock for the Town Hall? Or just try to get them to to log in and out of their computers at work? And that's the decision I need sooner than later, I guess.
Yeah, cause this technology sunsets on June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I just don't wanna go crazy on buying all sorts of technology, especially if we can do the computer, cause here's the problem is is like. Logging hours for certain people is different than others, right? The the clerk who shows up and works, you know, the normal Town Hall hours. Is a lot different than if we started asking you two to punch in and out and clock out. No, I know, but that's, I mean, like, I I'm saying that it's it's a lot more difficult, so I just think we need a good mechanism.
I think, but I think it's important, I think it, yeah, but it provides us data that we wouldn't otherwise have. Right, that's another part. Like, even if it's not directly related, like tied to the payroll system. I think, like, when I'm trying to do analysis and and I wanna figure out, okay, Luann's working sixty hours a week, and if we have to replace her, like.
Add a few more hours.
Like, that's important data point to know, right?
I I I mean, if you're asking me, I mean, I think, not that you are, but if you are, I think it's important. I mean, there are times when I need that data, you're right. I need the data of see who's doing what. Um, and I I I people are, you know. And we have, I mean, I've said this, we have great staff, we have great employees. I I don't know issues with any employee, but I have in the past. We have had issues with employees that.
Absolutely, yes.
Were we didn't know when the last time was anybody had seen them, you know, so.
What do you, do you think that we should buy the 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 thing? I mean, you're you're, you guys are.
For me, I think it's, I think it's the easiest way, because I I think, you know. I I think right now and where we're at, it it's gonna be one more thing I've gotta change and change and learn curve, and it's a thousand dollars. But I think either way, it will work, um. Half of them just login on their.
I think a lot of them do it already.
Yeah, I think a lot of them are logging in on their computer.
Okay, so that's important to know, right? I I I mean, I think we're, as a board, we, consensus seems to be that we continue people logging time at least.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, the van drivers at the COA login on the computer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I think being consistent across the board is absolutely the way to go. So if the majority of our employees are logging in online.
Alright.
It kinda gives us direct third direction of which way we're going.
Okay, I think that was kinda the way we were leaning, but I, like I said, I thought I would take the opportunity to let you know that there's this, that we need to have further conversations about that.
And it just makes it easier, because it's the same across all departments, to your point. I I think it's a no-brainer.
I get it, people don't like change. We understand that, but then the day, the, you know, you you work as the town employee. The basic necessity is making sure that the town is getting everything from you. The basic thing is, we need to know your times, right? In and out.
Yeah, that makes sense, man.
Okay, so we're just gonna have a vote to not purchase a new piece of equipment. But to to train everyone on how to login and out of, actually, everyone, people that are currently using it. To if they're not logging in and out on the computer, for them to login and out on the computer.
Ye- yes, that's the current conversation, but also maybe bring this up again before this expires is. The folks that don't log in, uh, do we need that data as well? That include.
I think what Debbie's saying is that we make those folks, or we educate those folks on how to.
Okay.
Do that, so that everyone's logged, so we don't have to buy this.
We would have to buy one for every location too, like it's only, you know, it's a time clock basically, so if you're gonna do it at the Highway Department, you'd have to put one at the Highway Department.
Yeah.
And and that might be easier for them than logging into a computer, cause they don't have computers.
Right. Yeah.
Or is there an app? There looks like there's.
There's an app. I think there's an app. Can you use your phone?
I believe you can, but I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, I think.
I thought it was like a separate option, is the way I was reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the on the.
Well, there's a.
Cause it's like options, and then there's a price associated with it, so there's like different ones.
Cause I'm not sure if the phone will work, because when you. For example, you're at, it's geolocated, so you can't be home and clock in and clock out, you know what I mean? It, we tell the system what IP address you're gonna use.
Gotcha.
For clock in and out.
Okay.
Well, gives gives protects the town a bit more.
The other thing about Carlos, just you mentioned different departments, I have to go back and look at their union contracts too. Because if it's not in there that we can implement a time clock, it's gonna have to be impact bargained for.
Right, but even let's say, take the police union, they they must be a way that, uh, you know, they they're budgeting their finances. Right? They're already punching in and out somehow. So we're just capturing that data. That's all we're doing. As far as unions, I.
They they have.
Unions.
Call in the morning and the chief, chiefs there, you know, I don't know, but I'm just saying, that's just something I'll have to look into to make sure that we don't sidestep the union contract.
Well, absolutely, we don't wanna go against any union things, but I know that they're logging in at some point.
Yeah.
And that could be a way of capturing their time in and out. We'll we'll know whether they're there or not, right? You call, we call for a police officer, they don't show up? Who's working this shift, right?
Well, again, I, we're not currently having any issues with any employees.
No.
But we have in the past.
Yeah, correct. This is not directly towards anybody, this is just basic housekeeping for the town of Freetown.
You don't wanna wait till you have a problem to try to fix it.
Correct.
Okay, so we're just gonna move forward with them logging in and off. Um, the current employees that are on the system continue using their computer to log in and out. And then we'll recircle and and talk further about this.
Okay.
Okay, so so no vote needed right now?
Necessarily a vote, I think I'm good with that decision.
Yeah. Alright, so no vote needed on number twenty-eight. We'll um, table that for now, and then go on to the number twenty-nine. Item number twenty-nine, discussion and vote on whether to approve the following appointments, A through D. A, Ashley Emery has temporary clerical help assessors conservation effective five fourteen twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-five. B, Lisa Podolsky as animal control agent inspector of animals effective five one twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-six. C, John DiMeros, DiMaderos, as Highway Department Laborer effective five twenty twenty twenty-five and six thirty twenty twenty-five. I should say through six thirty twenty twenty-five. D, Natasha, Tricia, sorry, Natasha, Natasha, butchering your name. Uh, C, Franciscan as recording clerk for Economic Development Committee, Building Committee, Finance Committee, Council of Aging Library, Community Building Committee. Bylaw Review Committee, Commission and Disability Conservation Committee, effective five twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-five. Ooh, that was awful. All right. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Is that right? Only to six thirty twenty twenty five?
Yeah, and it will auto renew on the um list when we do the reappointments.
Okay.
All right, I entertain the motion to approve the appointments listed on Gen item twenty nine, A through D.
Make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Fleckman Vega.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we'll have uh some public input. And uh you have gentlemen here, receipt your name for the record, please.
John Tomoski, thirty one Central Ave.
God, how are you?
Good and yourself?
All right, so uh what are you here to talk about?
Something happened today that the town I'm sure is aware of. That I think has taken it to the next level. Um, since paving central um Central Ave and the Bay Shores. The traffic situation has gotten a little out of control. Um, people are treating it as a main road. Um. I've seen a lot of close calls myself with children. Um, one just happened yesterday where. Somebody had to avoid very closely somebody on a bicycle. Um, and it's a motorized bicycle without a helmet, so. You can't really teach these people how to be safe.
I've seen that. I know exactly what you're talking about.
So, yeah, and so that that one got me a little concerned. That was yesterday or the day before, and that's not why I'm here right now. Why I'm here right now is I was mowing my lawn. And a car must have been going forty, forty-five miles an hour within a few feet of me. Called the police to let them know I have the plate. I'm not gonna go down that road because I have data because of where I am on Central Ave. It's not just that car. There's probably a dozen or more. Um. The data is private, obviously, cuz I'm not here to, you know, make people look bad or anything like that. I'm here. On behalf of the people in my neighborhood to try to keep everybody safe. Um, especially the, actually, everybody. Um, so. I did some research, um, because we've already talked to the police about it at length. Um, there's a sergeant that's pretty much, you know, made a. A project out of it, making sure that he's doing everything he can. Um, and there's also a patrolman that I met with today that's doing a lot as well. They both basically. Patrol that area as best as they can within their budget. Um, they have an issue where. A lot of the things that I see are at a uh a break where their shifts overlap. And so there's essentially no way for them to get to the area between the hours of maybe four thirty and five thirty. Which is when you start seeing the 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 people coming home from work between three and six. Um, so they're missing all of that, and that's no fault of theirs. So. I'm collecting what I can to tell them what's going on during those times. And that event with the bike happened around four thirty, five o'clock. When they're not gonna be there. Um, so I'm proposing to the town that. You know, I appreciate the fact that the signs were put in for twenty-five miles an hour. It was a good effort, but nothing changed.
Yeah, and I was also shocked that that was the lowest we could go.
Yeah, so.
You know, I live in the neighborhood too, like I twenty-five is kind of fast for that neighborhood.
So I've got a few things that I I'm in a perfect world, a lot of things can get done, but I think the best thing that will the town should do is. Best effort at this point and then see where it goes. I spoke with a police officer. Um. The first thing we could try to do is to enforce a change from the town level where there's a thirty mile an hour zone. On the one that comes into the Bay Shores. Whereas there's a twenty-five and a twenty-five on either side of it.
No.
I think we should strike that thirty, get rid of it, make it twenty-five the whole way, so they can enforce twenty-five the whole stretch. That gets you the issue of entering Bay Shores. So for whoever's patrolling that area, they're gonna see. I don't have to worry about if they're doing, if it's five over, I don't know, whatever it is, if they're doing thirty-six. It'd be a lot different if it's twenty-five mile an hour zone versus a thirty mile an hour zone. So semantics, I don't know. That gets you into Bay Shores. The issue then becomes, are they gonna be going around to, you know. The 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 shoreline area or are they gonna be going through Central? From my, from what I see, just because of position of my house. I can tell you by the sheer number of cars that go by during rush hour. Um, most people are using Central Ave. And so the theory that I have is you've already got the patrols, you've already got the radar truck showing the data. I've got data myself. It's obviously not official data cuz I'm not a town employee. I have a case study that was done in, um, actually, the state has vertical deflection countermeasures listed as, you know. One of the things that can help these things at at a town level. The town of Mansfield. I would, I'm sure they use this because they're used as a case study on the document. Where they had the exact same problem. And they went through phases of different types of vertical deflection countermeasures, which I talked to the highway department about last year.
It was almost speed bumps?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They call it that, state level, they call them that. So basically. The highway department's theory on that was it would be difficult cuz of the plows, and I understand that. And that's why they have the version that comes out and goes back during the winter. And that's what Mansfield did. So what I'm proposing the town does just because no matter what you spend with the police. People see the police, they're gonna slow down. If the police aren't there, the vertical uh deflection devices, speed bumps. They're gonna act and they're gonna do like, so I'll read, I'd just like to present this after I've, you know, read through it a little bit. As you guys can have this copy. Um, so the town of Mansfield, there's a paragraph that explains all this. It's pretty short. Speed bumps were initially installed on the most direct route to the train station, which is where they were having the issue. Drivers quickly figured out what streets didn't have speed bumps. Albeit less direct and started using those streets. So you could see if we started to do this maybe on Central Ave, they may just go up on that one that's more close to the shore. And they'll have the issue now. So to avoid that, uh, the town quickly responded by installing speed bumps on the less direct routes as well. All streets accessing the parking on the outbound side of the train station all have speed bumps. The speed bumps eliminated all resident complaints. I don't think it gets more clear than that.
Yeah.
So. I I know budgeting is a big thing and money does doesn't grow on trees, but these are not expensive.
Yeah.
I looked at Uline as a, everybody knows Uline if they worked in commercial at all. Two hundred and fifty dollars each one of these.
Really?
Yeah.
And then installation, I mean.
So that's.
Debbie lives like.
That's the difference.
Down from you? One house down from you?
Yeah, so I can say I I would love to help. Just because of my background as like an engineer background, I can tell you where I think strategically they should be placed to save the the town the most amount of money and then. Phase them as, okay, it worked with two. Or it's not working with two, now we have to put four. So you don't spend as much money. It it saves the the town money, but in my opinion, you can't put money in front of what it's gonna cost. To to say, why didn't we do this if something happens that's fatal?
No, I hear you.
We're very close to that fatal situation.
Yeah, I mean, I I walk my son around the neighborhood every day and I've had many, too many close calls, so.
He was two feet away today, so there you go.
I I I totally understand. Um.
I also live in the neighborhood.
My it's my understanding that this is a town level decision. It's not up to the state and that there could be bylaws that I looked at the bylaws today. I didn't see anything about. You know, everything I saw had to do with highway department and things like that. I already spoke with the highway department of what their theory was on the. The bumps and their only concern, at least in that conversation, was a logical one, which is what do we do when the plowing season starts?
Yeah.
Take them out.
So one of the other things is we have those um boards, right, that they can put out on the telephone.
Talked to them about that as well.
So those are, those can be maneuvered, right? So all it takes is brackets and the chief. Got so many brackets and put them in different areas that they had concerns or whatever. I wonder if we can talk to the chief about getting some additional brackets because I think. We've we've all passed them, right? And we all realize like all of a sudden you're driving and you say, oh geez, I gotta slow down, right? So I think that. It might give people a little bit of education to it and that might be a good first step.
So I talked to them about that and that's one of the things is that's more of. That's like, if you look at this in a phased approach, that's more of the discovery phase. They've done the discovery phase. They have the data. I have the data of. Being in the position I am on the drag strip. It's, you know that it's a problem. So that's more, in my opinion, that's more of a collection thing where. I think it's it's appropriate to gather that long-term data and and definitely get the budget to add those devices. Because from what I was told, those devices actually collect data and report that to the town for statistical purposes. And I think that's extremely valuable and should be done regardless of the speed bumps. I think the speed bumps are a more. Direct approach that doesn't cost the 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 town a lot of money. Um, the installation, I don't know. But I mean, it seems pretty simple of a concept where it's just, you know. You get it into the concrete in a way that it can be removed and then put back. And they may shift a little and you have to find out which one works best. That's why you probably just buy one or two to start and then see how they work and.
Yeah.
And then go from there. But I mean, at this cost. I mean, I think it's, it's an obvious choice when it comes to what's more valuable, a child's life or or a bump.
Yeah. One other thought I had, right? Is if like that's so right across street from your house, the other street that comes down.
There was a T-bone accident right there because of it. And by the way, I I know it's silly, but I found out why my lawn was. Keeping on and getting the sprinklers destroyed. It's because people are coming so fast that people are speeding out of that Hollywood Ave. Driving onto my lawn to avoid that car that's about to hit T-bone them.
That kind of reinforces what I was gonna say. Like what if that was a stop, a stop sign both ways there?
Oh, God, that would help.
Where?
So like, 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 even though it's it's it's, it might seem like it doesn't need to be a stop.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
But like, I I just, what I think it would do is it force people to slow down and then they can't even get up to speed again until they take a right by your house.
So my theory was put a speed bump on either side of that crest and it it makes it a more logical thing cuz the stop right there, I don't know if it would. I mean, that's just me thinking out loud.
No, I and I really haven't considered that until now, but okay, cuz I I I know what you're saying cuz I've seen it too where.
One on either side would get rid of that issue.
Central and then like by your house and then this cars coming cuz and and then going both ways.
Blind spot.
It's a blind like hill there.
So I think the 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 my theory was, I think it's about twenty feet towards your house. The first set could be put and you could put them in the middle so that people can go by with their baby carriages and not even hit the bump cuz it's on the side.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, maybe at the middle of where Hollywood comes out, either at the middle of it or just past Hollywood, put another one. So that gets people that are coming to Hollywood to slow down before they're near Hollywood and then again, when they get over Hollywood. And whether you're coming or going, you're gonna have to hit a speed bump and slow down to at least something and. You start there and you find other spots. And just so you know, we have, there's a bit more data. There's a gentleman that's or a lady that's putting their truck. In the road to slow people down so they don't go fast by their house. So the law is being taken into people's hands at this point because nothing's being done.
You can't even get going.
Yeah.
It's it's the shortest road.
Yeah.
Be surprised of it. Like I will say, there's a lot of traffic on Central.
Yeah, it's it's actually picked up in the past few years.
Because literally in the name, right? It's the centralmost street, so people use it and. Myself included, right? If I was to go down there, I feel like I would use Central. I don't have to, I'm right at the beginning of the island, so I don't have to go down there to get. Anywhere, but I feel like that's anytime I've had to go down there, I go Central.
I do know, there's a lot.
I moved in, so I rent at thirty-one and I moved in in twenty. Eighteen, I think. It wasn't that bad. Um, obviously, the pavement wasn't brand new. Um, I think it was around twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two is when I started noticing that. Things started picking up for some reason. I don't know what it was. It was before the pavement came in.
Yeah, I wonder if it's like cuz Crystal Springs has a has a. Uh, like what used to be Tiny Talks.
Yeah, I don't think they do anything down there too much.
I see cars out there a lot. So I walk them. I walk the dog by there every day. They have, I don't know what they're doing there.
Training, I think.
Like there's cars down there and I just. My experience is that there's been people. I don't know, maybe I'm selling on their work break, wherever they drive around the island, like when they and they, that's what I see.
I know I see cars go like sometimes it's the same car going back and forth in front of my house. I I wanna mount the ad, but I don't.
All right, so so let's talk about next steps here, right? So I I I like this. I we do have to get highway department involved. So we can get like, and I know this is gonna be frustrating. This is how government works. It's slow. So just work with me here.
I worked with highway department, one of my jobs, so.
So I I think that like, I I understand Chuck's concerns, right, of when there's plows, but if there's a uh easy way for us to. To get around, you know, to to remove those and we we have to think about like, you know, the big picture here, like, okay, so say we put a couple on the island. And then other folks want those too, like, we have to, we have to understand the the like, you know, we can't just be favoritism, especially on this border. To the to the board and the town manager both live within uh.
I get it.
Pretty much the same street, you know?
I get it.
Uh, so, but yeah, I think that we bring the highway department in. If you wanna support that data you have, make sure that 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 Debbie and Luann have that so we can include that in the packet.
So that, so that's, I was gonna bring that up. So the other thing is kinda two points. What you were saying about, you know, having people on the board that are. I was also gonna present, if the town didn't necessarily wanna pay for it, give the permission so maybe I could present this to the association.
Yeah.
And we could, I I hate to speak for the association here. Heck, I would pay for the first couple on out of my pocket.
Yeah.
Because it's it's in my front yard, so I'm trying to keep myself here safe, so.
I hear you.
So I think if it's a conflict of interest thing, I think maybe the association should take care of the first ones or I can take care of the first ones and then we can see what data we get from. The maybe either crest, either side of that crest of that hill, see what it does.
Yeah.
Get the raw data and then present it to the town and then you don't have that conflict of interest.
Yep.
And then get the devices on the on the pole. I know that I looked at the police, they said that was a budgeting thing, so wait for that to happen, but this in the interim. Um, I think it's it's a path forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, those radars are very, very expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I wasn't looking to put one there permanently. I was looking because those they're they're movable, right?
The ones that are five thousand, right?
What's that?
The five thousand dollar ones?
Yeah.
They're at least that.
But it's just a bracket, so they can take that unit and bring it cuz they have to take them off the pole to even charge them. Right? So you go by a pole sometimes and there it's there and then all of a sudden it's not there. So that's why I'm saying they could literally take that device. And hang it from a pole. And the data collection is great. But I think also bringing awareness to people so that when you drive by, not saying you in particular, but you drive by and you're like, oh geez. It's twenty-five mile, you know, there's these bright signs everywhere saying twenty-five miles an hour now. It allows people to actually realize how fast they're going.
Um, yeah, and in. If the Bay Shores, if the association. Was willing to do it.
I'll present a budget to them.
Yeah, and then. Well, I think that I think the important caveat that'd be Bay Shore puts puts it in and then removes them before snowstorms. For so so the highway department has nothing they have to worry about.
What's that August now?
Yeah, yeah, you know what I mean? If we were working out something like that, I I mean, as an association member, I'd be willing to kick in some money.
I mean, I think you've got enough people in this room that might be part of the association that would pay it.
Yeah, so I I think we should look into the legality of that, right? Like, can the association do that?
There's yeah, there's like, because it's town, it's a town public road.
That's why I'm here to ask permission.
So and you're the road commissioner, so it definitely need approvals and of course, obviously, you do, you'd want Chuck to be involved.
I was gonna say, we, I don't wanna make any.
He might not be happy about.
Yeah, and then and then the look at other options, right? Cuz one of the other things that you I've all driven over them is the like the raised walkway type. Ones because I worry about the abruptness of. You might not be bothered by it, but someone gets one in front of their house and the trucks are driving over and banging.
So that, so that's another thing. These these kind of account for that. There's different designs. Um, they're rubber. Um, and the town of, what was it? I said Mansfield. They tried different models and the ones that they came up with that were. For the things exactly what you're talking about was, uh, I don't know if it was a. Two inches high versus four inches high or something, two point two inches. Like they came up with, you can read the study. It's a sweet spot.
Yeah.
And there was even a model that they said it shifted too much. So they've done all the work for us.
Okay, awesome.
And there's more than this case study. There's all across Massachusetts. There's like ten of them listed.
It's not a unique problem, right?
Oh, this is a problem in everywhere in the state.
I think it's like, I think another, just the Bay Shore specifically with its its proximity to the train station.
Yeah.
Like there's gonna be more people moving in there, I you know, I could, I. Would not be surprised. We we see some accessory twelve units being built right now in the Bay Shores.
It's a density issue, right? And the roads are all narrow.
Yeah.
I just really worry about pedestrians cuz I I saw it yesterday or the day before, literally, and I I actually heard it. That I I'm pretty sure I I was, um, cuz I looked out, that person was on that bike and then seconds later I went into the kitchen and I heard. Like a ruckus, like like screeching or whatever. And it was right next, it was coming from that direction. So they very likely screeched to get around them.
Yeah.
Cuz they were going too fast.
Yeah.
And it I don't want this to be a meeting where we talk about somebody that's in the hospital or works, you know.
It it could be me cuz I, every day I walk that loop.
And I don't, and I don't selfishly, I don't want it to be me either, you know?
My kids walk out there as well, you know.
And I mean, we're not like this unique thing. There's other places in Free Town that I'm sure I'm sure are just like this. So maybe this can set that precedent. That it's not as expensive as you think it is to make this.
Yep.
Happen, like. Let's help each other.
All right, so we'll we'll do that. We'll get that on agenda. We'll and we'll 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 keep this moving forward, right? That's that's all I can promise.
Best we can do.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
All right, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna sign now and then we'll close.
It's a big stack.
Now, my hands are sore before I even. All right, where am I? Top one? All three of us? This one? This. It's easy with my name on it. I don't wanna sign. I was looking at this goal. What am I doing? I had trouble reading this one because like the background is so.
Yeah, it's weird. It's almost like fuzzy.
Yeah. All right, I'm creating a backlog now. Yeah, Charlie, come in the bottleneck here?
I'm trying to speed up. My words.
Henry Ford can do it. So can we. Some be line.
I'm clearly not listening to anything you're saying.
This one.
I don't know, I'm sorry, man.
I won't take it personally.
Just me? It's been a long day. This was just me, this one?
Nope.
Everyone, everybody, everybody. Is there a way for us to have, like, I think this already exists, but for like all the cool events that we're doing, like the children's musical event, all that stuff, can I subscribe to that calendar? For like the events, so that I, it'll just pop up in my Google Calendar?
I have to ask Kyrie how to do that. We do have the event, you know, the, the quarterly event newsletter, but I can ask her if there's a.
It would be cool, I guess, right, to be part of like a group that they could.
Just push, push it out, yeah, like, to, so you could subscribe to the calendar.
There's a way to do it.
Oh, yeah, for sure. I I I don't know if we're, for utilizing that, because I think that would be.
I'm sure she can figure it out.
Yeah, just because like, for me, it's like, I like to look at my calendar and then.
Yeah.
Then you remember.
Die without having my calendar and everything on it.
Yeah, I I have seven calendars right now, which is crazy, more than that.
Yeah, we just got that Hertz calendar for the house. It links to all the devices and everything else. It's a big display at home.
See, I need that.
It it works. It works when you use it.
You know? I might need to look, what's it called?
Hertz.
Hertz.
There's also, uh, there's different kinds, but Hertz is pretty interactive. You can, any device and it'll just all pop up. You have a screen at home, it's literally just a screen for the calendar. You go by it, recognizes you, pulls up whatever your agenda is, meal planning, whatever you need.
Wild. I haven't heard of that.
Yeah, Hertz, and it's also a skyline, I believe, is just one.
Hook up all your different accounts to it?
Correct. And you could do any calendar, so I, we both have Apple and then Gmail, Hotmail, uh, town stuff, you name it, it'll just all link together.
Wow, I am buying one of those like today.
Yeah, that's.
I wanted to cook dinner for me.
Yeah.
That's what I want.
Well, I saw a robot that does your laundry, so.
Robot that does laundry?
Old laundry.
Oh, I've seen that. I want that robot to cook dinner.
It's called Uber Eats.
What was that, uh, what was the robot from the Jetsons? What was the name for the, what was the robot's name in the Jetsons?
Uh, I don't know, yeah.
At some point, she'll be around.
Close, we're close. Windows tied to that.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Vager.
Yes.